So, good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, April 19, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Kill Smith, Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavell Chair.
Here.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may be before city council and profanity is not permitted. Once you are called, please restate your name and neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belts Hoover, Lagos, Nigeria. Global Intelligence Society US National Candidate for President 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. Load by voter verification and uncensored freedom of speech and public comment unlike what they have at Boston City Council. This council is much better at this than that council. Welcome to the Republican Party, Democratic Party, Trump-Biden Carnival starring porny Stormy Daniels and player Hunter Biden. April 2023 is the GIS-sponsored African Intelligence Month. Among the most informationally sophisticated and highest intelligence Africans worldwide in my view is female ex- ex Nigerian nanochemist, Dr. Omo Wunmi Sadiq. Concerns of council include recognition of service and entertainment. The proclamation for Ron Romano recognized his care for Pitt City in a carnival atmosphere, which I find troubling. Like other carnivals, the RR Council Carnival 28 March 2023 had sideshows. Sideshow one, Council Room Burleque, starring Ms. Gross, District 7. We mooches saw Center Council Room Ms. Gross put herself full frontal before the city clerk table near the presider lectern. An officer of Black African descent greeted her, pulling her into close lock and brace, Ms. Gross, and officer continued neck-to-neck caressing for more than three minutes. This is vulgarity in front of children who are here. This is decorum. The Pittsburgh Cotton Club-style carney continued with Sideshow two. The great Ganey Gladhand, how y'all doing extravaganza, get in queue. Mr. I can't prove I voted for myself to be mayor, Ganey jazzed in, jigged out. It was like 1940's lightbulb show. How cliched is that? Pittsburgh's godfather bumping with grateful mooches, wanting autographs, and Ganey jive talk. All we needed was some collard greens and some Italian hoagie. This is reinforcing caricatures, and this kind of behavior has to stop.
Can I interrupt?
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
This is a photo of my husband, who was deputy fire chief for the Pittsburgh Fire Bureau, and he proudly wore his PBF hat in the Himalayas on a Nepali trek. So, he managed to survive being shot by someone who randomly shot into a crowd when he was a teenager. He survived 41-plus years in one of the most dangerous jobs. He survived a lung infection in the Himalayas with just antibiotic in a third-world country and no doctor. He also survived the most dangerous airport in the world, landing in Lukla Airport, but he couldn't survive a world-class Pittsburgh hospital. The city controller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the controller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. It is no wonder that issues with the school district persist. Checks and balances do not exist when the same person is the controller for the city and the Pittsburgh public schools. Is that a conflict of interest? When the same person moves on to work for the county, they still oversee county property. The memorial green space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of Bon Air. Michael J. Mullen Reflection by Battalion Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, and highly conscientious and caring. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Poma Chakman-Yahalahi.
Greetings and good day. My title is Poma Chakman-Yahalahi, and I've been speaking for several years to city council and also other municipal organizations within the jurisdiction of the city. And there's a common theme across all of the conversations and the meetings that I've been a part of with the Grand Council, the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And that common theme is ignorance. And it's an ignorance that doesn't have to stand. It's an ignorance of who the Aborigines are of the Americas. It's the ignorance of our story and relationship to history. It's an ignorance as it relates to our connections to the lands that we all love here in the Americas. And it's a disconnect with what the role and the responsibility of city officials are to our people. And we have been enlightening in the most effective way that we can. And I encourage that all the municipal organizations and agencies within the jurisdiction of the city of Pittsburgh be open to have presentations presented by our people so that everyone can get to know who we are. Because when I hear comments, and all of the comments are concerning the lands and the resources and the crime and the inability for the children to have after-school programming and things that would sustain them and make them great productive beings as they become adults, what I don't hear is any concern for the Aborigine people or our children. And so that's a problem. And so we have a great opportunity as all Indigenous peoples are rising across the globe and holding people accountable for not honoring them and not honoring their rights. The city of Pittsburgh can be the model or one of the models because there are many models throughout the country and Canada and other places and spaces in the Americas where there is this union that is coming together to honor our people and to work with our people as it relates to our Cosmo vision. Everyone makes decisions and no one thinks to include the Aborigine people. And so with that, this is a great opportunity. There's always been great work that's been done in the city of Pittsburgh, so let's continue that momentum and never forget that everyone is on our land. And let's share our land equitably. And you can't talk about inclusion and equity if you are not listening to the voices of the Aboriginal people here in this area. So I'm just going to continue to do what I do and continue to work with nonprofits and for-profits and any entity that is under the jurisdiction of the state of Pennsylvania and the United States government as well as the city jurisdiction so that our rights are invoked.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Ikahana Halmaquina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Ikahana Halmaquina, the Grand Inca chief of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. In the days and weeks and months ahead, you, city council, will have an opportunity to review legislation being proposed on behalf of the Human Relations Commission of the city of Pittsburgh on our behalf, the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. You all will have the opportunity to clear a pathway for Indigenous people to make a space for us as the rightful stewards of the land. In no uncertain terms is it ever okay to ignore it just because you don't understand it? Or maybe you don't know what to do with it. Ignorance of the law is no excuse. The law is very clear as expressed in Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 of the Constitution and excluding Indians not taxed. Now, one could easily misinterpret what taxed means, but according to the Bouvier Dictionary adapted to the Constitution provides clarity so that you can easily replace taxed with handled, censured, counted, enumerated. So, taking a closer glance and having a better understanding of what Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 of the Constitution really means, replace the word taxed with handled, counted, and/or enumerated. Many ill-conceived policies supported by the United States and municipalities locally, the Indian Scout Act, the Indian Removal Act, the Racial Integrity Act of 1924, the doctrine of discovery, gave away thousands of acres of Indigenous land. That has to be redressed. Restitution must be given to the Aboriginal Indigenous people of the land. You don't get it to have its folks wait. You don't get to have a hands-off approach when we petition you to be honorable and noble and honor the treaties that currently still exist, but hands-on approach when you feel your public service feel that we should have your ID to travel upon our ancestral land. We invite city councils to the table to discuss all of these matters that are important to Indigenous people. We implore you to sit down with us, all nine of the members that make up city council, even ones that change of hands. Sit down with us.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Also, provide your name and number. You'll be given three, excuse me, name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. It's up at the top of the hill. I put this cup off for you because, as you know, I listen to 90.5 FM WESA. And the only reason why I keep bringing this up is because when I listen to this show, listen to the different shows, the different programs, that I am, I feel pretty good about the speakers and the people interviewed in interviews. And the reason why is that whenever these, your staff on 90.5, when the show is over, they usually say thank you. Unlike if you call KDKA, Marty Griffin is screaming and hollering and may click you off. I also, this is for 90.5. I love you and I listen to you all the time. And I even have my grandchildren listening. Now, one thing I must say, I know they say there's certain things we can't talk about, but you need to understand, I used to be a school guard, and I'm walking my grandchildren to school. And you citizens driving in the car or rolling up on us while we're in the crosswalk, as a school guard, I was learned, I mean, I learned, but I was taught that that car is supposed to be stopped when we're in the walkway because a child may turn around and run back. So you are to wait until everybody's feet is on that sidewalk, you understand? Not when they're putting it up there because they may change your mind. Please, these are our children, and you're coming into our neighborhood, please let them get to school. My children love their school, in which I speak highly of them because that school loves the children. That's Miller African-American-centric school. And they treat the kids good, and the kids love going to school. I don't particularly care walking them to school, but because the way my daughter walks, works at 5:00, I had to be to work at 5:00 in the morning, someone has to do it. And I'm determined that my children will learn. They don't have to go to another neighborhood. They're in this neighborhood and they are being treated like they are welcome. Do you understand? When I come here to city council, I'm coming for a reason, not for me. My days is towards the end. I'm 76. I'm talking about when I got the eight-year-old and 11-year-old that I take to school, and they talk, we talk, and they talk about their friends, they talk about their school. When they love the school, then we can teach them. We can teach them. If you have, the kids love school, even if you have teachers that may not teach that well, but they'd be wanting to go. And I come down only because I think you need to hear me sometime. I'm coming, I made up my mind that I've been praying more, and also, I'm not going to fuss at you because you already know what you're doing wrong.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My daughter had her face broken. Literally. My name is Bernadette. I'm from Beachview. And I love my police officers, but I am not happy with the ones that are sitting at Realty in Tonopah. My section between Velasco and Realty is one-way. I cannot tell you, you can look at my sunburn, I have been, I have now put myself in danger out up at the top of Realty in Tonopah because there is an officer, that the construction workers, that neighbors have called 311. He sits on his phone, on his, he sits on his phone, and cars are coming down. I scream at every car coming down. One went down and turned around and came up. I didn't know it was an officer. I thought, oh, great, here comes road rage. And then I realized he's in uniform. Ah, I'm calling DOME, there's no sign up there. I took his word for it. I sent a text to Robin, the mayor's other right-hand man, Coghill, and Robert from the county. And it turns out there are signs, but they're ill-placed, completely ill-placed. So if you're coming up from Crosby up Realty and you see road construction, whether they're active or not, and you want to make a left-hand turn down Tonopah, unless you're driving out of your sunroof with your feet on the steering wheel, you can't see the one-way sign. You cannot see the do not enter one-way at all. That's positioned to be coming up Realty. Well, you got people coming up Tonopah, and you got people coming up Realty. Five cars in one hour, that's one too many. That's just one section of a day. We need proper signage. DOME needs a department that gets a list of one-ways. Another officer, and she called 311, she lives at the top of the hill, she's coming down, and she almost had a head-on collision. Not good. Not good at all. It's a one-way street. And if your own officers are not seeing it, but truth be told, I was always taught that if you're on your job and you're on your phone for whatever reason, I understand emergencies, but when your construction workers are saying that the cops that are sitting, I don't know if they call them off-duty or whatever, that's stealing. If you're on social media while you're getting paid, I don't care if you're in a hospital, I don't care if you're a school teacher, I don't care who you are, that's stealing. So, please, right now, there's still these road workers, we need, DOME needs to come out and look at their placements and look at logic of where these one-way, wrong-way, do not enters, there's not enough signs, I'm telling you that right now. And that's per your officer who thought there were no signs.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, that takes us on to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one new paper, Bill 1390.
Bill 1390, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Two Warrants Totalling $150,000 in Settlement of a Case Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
With approval.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. New paper is Bill 1408.
Bill 1408, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Rysinger Comer &amp; Miller LLC for Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $15,683.90.
With approval, discussion, please.
Question, Councilman Kraus?
Mr. Kennedy, are you here for this?
Yes.
Do you want to come up?
Thanks.
There you go. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning, Councilman, very well, thank you.
Good, thanks. Name who you are, what you do, and for the record, and then a brief synopsis of why you came to talk about the bill.
Sure. My name is Michael Kennedy. I'm an associate city solicitor at the city of Pittsburgh Law Department, and I am here in reference to Bill 2023-1408, in essence, to answer any questions that wouldn't be more properly answered in executive session. So I can answer broad questions, but I wouldn't want to give away any strategy or any details, things of that nature.
Is it your desire that the council goes into executive session for this bill?
I don't have a desire to do that, Councilman. This is ongoing litigation. It involves attorneys that the city has hired to represent officers who have been sued. Typically, the law department will represent these officers, but in certain occasions, the law department is conflicted out because, for example, some of these officers have been disciplined. And when that discipline occurs, it's difficult for the same legal department to represent management in the discipline proceedings and then still represent the officer in the civil litigation.
Gotcha.
So when those conflicts occurs, that's when we hire outside counsel.
So the expenditures for outside counsel?
Right.
I have no further questions. It may be the wish of council to enter into executive session to discuss. I'll leave that up to members if they have questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmore?
We had an executive session about the other litigation related.
We've had executive session to discuss the bills from outside counsel on this particular lawsuit in the past. The lawsuit's been going on for some time. As you can see, the lawsuit was filed in 2018. So the lawsuit's been going on for some time, and we've had executive sessions in the past to discuss the outside counsel invoices.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to invoices. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the P-cards.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That will take us to our last committee of the day, which is Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. We have one new paper, Bill 1407.
Bill 1407, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the GOMAR for the Purchase of Specialized Medical Training Mannequins at a Total Cost Not to Exceed $152,468.96.
With approval, discussion, please.
Question, Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, please. We have representatives here. I want to give you an opportunity to come up and explain to the council the purpose of 2407. Good morning, how are you? Is this your first time here at the table?
No.
As our new chief.
Oh, well, I have egg on my face.
Well, no, first, I want to say thank you so very much for the unanimous decision to appoint me as chief. I will not let you all down, so thank you very much. My name is America Gilchrist, I guess now Acting Chief of EMS.
James Lutowski, I'm one of the training crew chiefs for EMS.
Morning.
I'm Charles Showers, Department Business Administrator for Public Safety. Good morning.
Okay, good morning. So, the floor is yours if you'd like to speak to the bill.
So, the one thing about Pittsburgh emergency medical services is that we've been on the cutting edge of advances in pre-hospital care. The tools that we need, sometimes, you know, they're expensive. This mannequin is absolutely phenomenal. I'm actually going to let our training crew chief explain to you the ins and outs. But a lot of times when we're in training, we do mock simulations, and you don't have that hands-on. It's usually the person that's teaching the class saying, okay, this person is breathing this times, how many times a minute? He needs this kind of intervention. So this mannequin actually simulates a live human being, and we'll be able to train on it and, you know, hone our skills. So I'll let James Lutowski comment further on the mannequin.
Good morning, thanks for the opportunity. Just a couple of things. First of all, our normal simulation, we carry three high-fidelity simulators, and then a couple medium, and then some low-fidelity task-focused simulators. These will replace two of our adult high-fidelity simulators that are no longer supported because they're past their life expectancy. The first one is an OB-GYN simulator, and unfortunately, the real-life truth of it is that a lot of healthcare providers that treat broad ranges of patients, so EMTs, paramedics, nurses, non-specialized physicians, might go through their entire training without actually seeing or being present for a live birth, which means that sometimes a paramedic, their first interaction with a baby being born might be as a lead paramedic on an emergency call. This simulator is basically, delivers a baby both normally and through various breaches and complications that even if you experience a live birth, if you're lucky enough in your training to be present on shift when someone has a live birth, they're almost never complicated. The first time we have a paramedic that experiences a complicated birth cannot be in someone's house in the middle of the night when they've never delivered a baby before. This mannequin gives us an opportunity to really experience complicated live births. It also elevates the mannequin to be able to do all patient care, simulation, and parameters. So the paramedics can take the blood pressure, use heart monitoring, use a defibrillator on the mannequin. So it's really, really excellent piece of equipment. The other thing is, most mannequins are almost always androgynous, so this will be the actual first literal female mannequin that has ever been experienced in the system. And that's the same in most systems because when you have an androgynous mannequin, you can say, okay, this is a male, this is a female, whereas this will be the first OB mannequin, the NEE. mannequin that any EMS agency has around here, is also going to be the first true female mannequin. It will also be the first set of diverse skin tone mannequins that we've had in our system. Most of them come in a general, like plasticky, orange, pink color. These have options for both dark, medium, and light skin tones. So not only will we better represent our patient population, but also our paramedic population as well, which is really exciting. The second, and that mannequin also comes with a neonate, which is also high fidelity. So we'll be replacing one of our infant high-fidelity simulators, and that's essentially two for the price of one, whereas both of them would be a higher cost if we bought them through another vendor. The second high-fidelity mannequin is an adult trauma mannequin, which is specifically made to be reinforced and sealed from moisture so that we can do the all-hazards training that we're used to, rescue simulations, hazardous material simulations, whereas if most mannequins that are high fidelity, that can do all those things, you can't get them near a drop of moisture or the electronics are shot. This mannequin is made specifically for outdoor and very rigorous use that can elevate the training for our providers. Then we have a couple skillset trainers for just putting in breathing tubes, IVs, and needle decompressions when you put needles into someone's chest for various reasons. That will decrease the wear and tear on the high-fidelity simulators and stretch their life expectancy by doing the repetitive skill work on the lower fidelity, skill-focused trainers. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about it.
You see why I had him explain?
Yeah. I, yeah, I don't even, I don't even know where to begin, or imagine if I'm even caffeinated enough to get, to do this. But first of all, how proud we are to have you as part of our EMS. What, what an amazing, uh, presentation. Clearly, you've done your homework and understand fully what it is that you're asking the council to support here, so I can't imagine that we're, that we will not support this unanimously. The, I guess the first question I have, this sounds so state-of-the-art. Are we one of the first cities to even begin this process? Or have other cities done this and we're following suit?
Most of the time, these simulators, because of the cost, are limited to training centers. So people might have experience with this type of simulator when they go through their initial training. And then West Penn Hospital has a couple simulator trainers from this company. So if you scheduled time to go there, you could use their simulators as well. The problem for us is to get all of our providers through one training cycle. It takes 17 classes of 12 people per time, and that would eat up the entire simulation schedule for the West Penn, you know, West Penn Hospital. We would be the only one in this region that had a simulator of this fidelity, and my personal belief is that you don't get great by accident or stumble into it. It has to be by design, and this will support my providers for years to come. So normally, our mandatory trainings, we do three training days per year. Our first training that we will have once these mannequins are delivered, and there's a lead time, of course, associated with that. So I predict probably one of the first training days of next year, which would start in January, is pediatric advanced life support, where you prepare for the absolute worst thing you could experience, which is a critically ill child. And we would integrate the OB factor with that, because there's two times that we experienced critically ill child, children, essentially sleep-related emergencies, where there was unsafe sleep practices, or during childbirth, are the two most likely times that our providers will interact with a really, really sick kid. The OB simulator will allow us to not only hone skills and refresh providers on physically delivering a complicated child, but then also what happens when the child comes out and it is an emergency still, they require life-saving care.
And keep in mind, our, our bureau does all of our training in-house. So it's like, the, the better tools that we have, the better providers that we can be. So, um, he's an integral role in keeping that training fresh and new and at the, on the advance of technology. So I think this would be, like, extremely helpful for us to have.
This council has always supported tools and training for public safety workers, and will continue, speaking out of turn, but I will continue to always, always be there to support you in what it is that you need to do your jobs as best, to your best ability. This is unlike, I think, anything that I've ever seen come to the table before. I'm absolutely fascinated by, by the, the opportunity that it provides. How did we start the journey to realize we want this and need this within our EMS department?
It started with just the fact that our current high-fidelity simulators are past their life expectancy or no longer supported. Usually, within five to seven years, the companies just make a new product and they stop supporting the old one so that you buy the new one. When we started investigating, we were looking at the company that we currently have mannequins from, as well as some other vendors, and we just happened to stumble on these two, which meet very specific needs. We have no OB training capability for pre-hospital providers in this region besides West Penn Hospital, like I mentioned, and the amount of wear and tear that goes on mannequins when we have to do things like hang them over a hillside or put them in a car for a rescue simulation. This one, the trauma howl, is made specifically for that scenario so that it can withstand being lifted, dragged, pulled, getting wet. And we do a lot of training like that, that we previously had to downgrade to either medium or low fidelity simulation, and that just takes the realism out of it. For a paramedic to turn to the instructor and say, what's the blood pressure? That decreases that patient interaction.
I see.
These mannequins, you can assess all of those things. Short of getting up and walking away, we can get every parameter from this mannequin.
So they're Wi-Fi? I don't know how to ask that question. It's all, it connects with your smart devices and...
Yep, there's Bluetooth, and there's a controller, almost like an iPad, which is included in the quote. You can change all the parameters in real time, or we can set up predetermined simulations that you just push start, and the mannequin will actually just respond to the treatments that are being provided.
It's just, it's fascinating. It's just absolutely fascinating. The, so many of us have gone through training, public safety training, at the fire, where we do fire training. We've done fire ops and, and, but, and so I know where we train fire. Where do we train EMS? Do we have specialized facilities in which we do, do these scenarios?
We have actually our training facility down in the Strip District. So that's where we do most of our training. The one helpful thing about training real life, like this mannequin, being a first responder, you never know how you're going to react in a real-life situation. So actually having a mannequin that can simulate the things that a human body will do during emergency, it, it puts you on guard. It gets you prompted to treat that patient. But yes, our training facility is in the Strip District.
I'm not sure I want to get on this show, but I'm asked a question. Is this something the council can come to see?
I will gladly have you come deliver your first child if you've never delivered one.
Well, I, I, others have had experience that, that clearly I've not had. Everybody here's had experience that I've not had. So maybe that's why I'm fascinated with this, but I would love to come and see how this operates. This has been a pleasure having you here, and thank you for coming so prepared to, to petition the cause, and I certainly am happy to support, and I imagine my colleagues will as well. Thank you. Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus?
Thank you all. That was, I'm, all of the things that Councilwoman, Councilman Kraus said is, goes for me as well. This is certainly not what I expected when I saw the bill. I was thinking, oh, you know, thinking about the CPR mannequins or something. This is way beyond that. So, but I think I've lost count. So we have one of the OB-GYN plus the infant, and then one adult trauma that's outdoor and rugged, and then you said some low fidelity?
Yeah, towards the end of the quote is two airway trainers, and those are specifically for doing like the needles in the chest and putting in breathing tubes. That repetitive training, that repetitive skills just wears on a, a higher fidelity. And then there's also a pediatric and an infant just skills trainer. So when we're not practicing true simulation, we're just verifying skills. Those are the mannequins that we would use for that.
Well, this is actually, considering the level of equipment that you've just described, I'm happy to vote for, it doesn't seem like the bill is big enough, honestly. It's just unbelievable. So thank you all for that description and for the invitation, and we'll talk about, take you up on it.
Thank you. Councilmore?
Um, yeah, I just had a quick question. So, you know, with all the, the technology involved in these, is the service included in, in, in this cost?
That's correct. There's a three-year service agreement included with the, with the contract, so, and I believe that should cover basically all maintenance and replenishment of consumables and, and so on, I think, right?
For three years, we'll actually send it back to the company, and they'll do essentially a refurb every year. They'll send us a loner, we'll send them ours. They'll do a total refurb and then return it to us, and that's the three-year service plan.
Okay, and then after, so what's the life expectancy of, you said five to seven years?
The current ones that we are still using, we, one of the main reasons we're only replacing them is because they're not supported anymore. We can't get parts, and they're about 12 years old. So we take really good care of our equipment, and as long as we can get support for it, the consumables, once we have to replace them beyond the warranty, are relatively low cost. I would say, I would estimate probably five or less thousand dollars per year. So once we get beyond the warranty, as long as they're supported by GOMARD, I don't have any concerns about being able to keep them running for much longer than that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All the time, too.
Kelsmith Wilson.
It's only been three years. Thanks for bringing this to us. I had a, a question, and it's not to like justify why we're spending the money, I'm just curious about the topic. So how often is it the case where, you know, EMS is called for a childbirth?
It's more frequently than you would think. We get labor and delivery calls every day, and it depends, it's very patient-specific. There are some patients that when you get to the house, you know immediately. There's no way to get the person in the ambulance safely without delivering the child. The vast majority of cases, when people call early enough, they, we just transport them to the hospital, and it's just a routine advanced life support call. I would say that we probably deliver between 10 and 20 children in the field per year, which is, sounds low, but for the amount of OB calls we get, it's kind of a low percentage overall. And that being such a low frequency but high acuity event, really raises the concern that you have a paramedic that comes right out of class, has to respond to an OB call, never experienced a childbirth, and the child is delivered breach and not breathing. And that is something that you can't just guarantee someone gets in their training. So probably 10 to 20 kids per year delivered in the presence of our paramedics and EMTs.
Do you ever, are there encounters where the individual didn't want to go to the hospital? Or they didn't have care, or they didn't know what to do?
So there are sometimes, especially some cultural implications, where some people just have a birthing plan with a midwife and the hospital is not part of it. A lot of times when we get called, it's an access issue. It's a transportation issue, it's an access to healthcare issue, and we are the kind of the last resort for people that have access barriers. So a lot of the people that we encounter that deliver a child just have low access, or they waited too long to go to the hospital. We get a lot of interstate deliveries where people are trying to get to the hospital.
Like, are they concerned, or people, will people be concerned with the bill that they will receive at a hospital? And they're like, well, I'll call EMS because I'm going to, you know, they could help me. I'm just trying to understand, is that at all, any, any cases?
I, I don't think that that's the case. A, a lot of times when we see like immediate births, it's because there was a lack of prenatal care. And so it's, you know, you're, you're sort of stuck in the moment. I fortunately or unfortunately had the pleasure of delivering three kids, not mine's included, but it is a very humbling experience. And they're, they cannot teach you that in paramedic school. You do clinical rotations when you're in paramedic school, you see some things, but you can't have birth on demand. So it's like this mannequin, to be able to actually see it and the complications that could be experienced during childbirth, is just something that I don't think I can quantify, so.
The only times I've experienced people that have said, I don't want to go to the hospital post childbirth, are it's a cultural or a planning thing. A lot of people, like especially people that were planning on a home birth, midwife gets stuck in traffic, baby comes faster than possible. It's comforting when a midwife is there, it's not comforting when you're, have no healthcare provider whatsoever present. So we have had a couple cases where we'd arrive and people would say, no, I'm not necessarily interested in going to the hospital. Of course, we advocate for the patient, and, you know, if everybody's okay and healthy and they have a plan and a healthcare provider's coming to the house, that patient has the right to be able to make their own, you know, healthcare decisions.
And we also get a bunch of calls for midwife centers. So, you know, sometimes they're having problems delivering the child, so they'll call the paramedics as well. So that's another kink in armor that, you know, we have to deal with, so.
How many, how many midwife centers are there in the city?
The biggest one is the one in the Strip District.
There's a couple, but, yeah.
And they are bought by UPMC, I think, now. I think UPMC oversees them, they previously were independent.
And so you provide transportation if there's a complication?
Oh, absolutely.
There to, yeah.
And we actually, that's one of the reasons why the OB mannequins piqued our interest is because there are so many calls at the midwife center. And it's usually when something happens that they recognize that it's beyond their scope to handle outside of, of a critical care facility. They'll call 911, the, there is a chance anytime we put an elevated risk over normal, just a regular someone at their house calls 911 for labor, there's an elevated risk that if we go to the midwife center and they've already decided this is a complicated birth, that my paramedics are going to put that person in the ambulance and something is going to happen during that trip. And if the child is delivered or partially delivered, the risk for it to be a very complex or dangerous delivery is very high.
Interesting conversation. I can, I can say that fortunately, all three of, of my children are born at the, at that midwife center, and they did a phenomenal job, I thought, but, you know, so we were very fortunate. Although the third one, uh, he's, he's pretty, he's pretty active, and all of us had the, I guess, baby call you all on the 31st Street Bridge before we got there, because it was cutting it close to, on the third one, but luckily that, we were able to get there in time.
Yeah, the midwife center is right near our training division, so when I'm not assigned other tasks, a lot of times I respond to 911 calls with the crews and support them, and I actually go to the midwife center personally a lot because it's just blocks away from, from work, so.
Okay, well, I'm interested in continuing this conversation around that, especially with the midwife center, because, well, for a couple of different reasons, but also it's in, in my newly expanded district as well, so, uh, thanks for everything you do. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Madam President? Seeing no further discussion, all those in, oh, Council, second round? Councilman Kraus?
This, I'm, I'm in my 16th year sitting at this table, and I've never had such a fascinating conversation as this one, and, and with such a level of professionalism and preparation and skillset, and I am proud and honored that you are part of EMS here in the City of Pittsburgh, and we are honored to have you as City Pittsburgh employees. Yeah, you do us proud. You really do us proud. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you all for being here. Congratulations, Chief. Okay. So that exhausts our agenda for today.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Thank you. Pleasure.
You're going to get new badges. They all say deputy all over them.
We do have a few meeting, well, we do have a meeting announcement. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meeting on Tuesday, April 25th, and Wednesday, April 26th at 10:00 a.m. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. To register to speak at all these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-22138. Madam President?
Thank you. I just want to wish Councilman Kraus and Councilwoman Strasburg a happy birthday. I'm terrible with these birthday things, but, so, I realized that both of yours just passed, right? Did I miss anyone else's?
Yeah. I just learned the councilwoman was in Aries as well, too. I should have known all along.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
What's the symbol for?
Rams.
And it was something. But happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. And I also want to call for a post-adjourned and a public hearing regarding the challenge of tax-exempt property status in the City of Pittsburgh. But I, I'm hoping that we don't have to schedule, but I think we're, I'm getting calls about how, what the process is for challenging it and that kind of stuff. So I think it'd be, it might be helpful if we need to have it, we have it ready, but, so I have motion to, motion for...
Second. There's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam President will work with the clerk to get that scheduled.
Thank you.
Do you want to register your aye vote?
And can I register an aye vote for the votes I missed when I was out of here?
Thank you. Anything else? If not, motion to excuse absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.